6:00 PM redevelopment agency meeting for March 4, 2025. Let the roll call reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Board Member Richie, who has asked to be excused, and Chair White is present with us on Zoom. Chair White, would you like to say hello?
Thanks, Vice Chair Hyer, I'm here.
Welcome, we're glad you're here and we're glad all of you folks are here as well. We will start our opening ceremony with the pledge of allegiance. We've asked Councilmember Graff if he would lead us in that.
Please rise if you're able and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Board Member Graff. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. Are there any acknowledgements that we want to acknowledge today?
Hey Angela, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, I don't know if that's...
Is it me?
Thank you.
Is this better?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, that sounded scary. Anyway, I was just thanking Dave Sawyer and the administration for all the work they've done with the community, talking about the parking issues downtown, so that's all, sorry about that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Any other acknowledgements? Okay, well, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. We have reports from administration, airport community reinvestment area. I think Sarah Meese is going to present to us tonight. Welcome, Sarah.
All right, good evening, board members. The first item that we have to present to you tonight is an amended interlocal agreement with Weber County for the Airport CRA. So just by way of background, the Airport CRA was established in 2023. In June of 2023, the RDA Board adopted the project area plan and budget, and also adopted interlocal agreements with the taxing entities participating in the CRA, which included Ogden City, Weber County, Ogden School District, and the central Weber Sewer District. Later that fall, Weber County shared some concerns about the interlocal agreement, and they were also in the process at the time of updating their CRA participation policy in process. So over the course of 2024, the city worked closely with Weber County to renegotiate that interlocal agreement, and earlier this year in January 2025, the county approved the amended interlocal agreement. So this evening, we're requesting your consideration and approval of the same amended interlocal agreement with the county. There are a couple of changes we just want to highlight here compared with the initial interlocal agreement. First is that the amended interlocal agreement will restrict the use of the county's portion of tax increment to infrastructure, and in this particular CRA, that could include electrical, water, sewer, taxiways, apron, and so forth. The amendment also reduces the county's participation rate from 90% to 75%. And again, those first two changes are really bringing this agreement in line with the county's new CRA policy. The county's maximum contribution would remain unchanged at $17 million, and we would keep our base year as 2020 with the CRA expiring in 2047. We would also bump back the tax increment commencement date, and that would be the earlier of either January 1, 2026, or January 1 of the year in which the RDA triggers that date. And that's our intent on this one, is to trigger for January 1 of 2025. And then the table you see there just shows the participation rates of each taxing entity, their maximum contributions, and then our total increment budget for this CRA. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Sarah?
Yes.
Board Member Graff?
Thank you. From 90% participation rate to 75% participation rate, and yet the total value of the tax increment remains the same, how does that happen when we've lost 15% of the contribution from Weber County?
So the original budget was based solely on... So there's, within Weber County, there are multiple different, kind of like, subentities, and the original budget was focused on the county's taxing entity line. But when we have them participate in agreements like this, they actually have multiple entities that are contributing to that CRA. So we've updated that to include that as well. So those are, subentities are now represented in that maximum contribution. And they're identified in the interlocal agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I don't know if you want to make the presentation for the next part while you're here?
Sure.
That might work, let's go ahead and do that.
All right, so the next item we have for your consideration this evening is a participation agreement with Williams International. And this is for an exciting and really significant expansion project that they're considering out at the Ogden Airport. So just to recap, the Airport CRA, this is the project area in which the expansion project is located. And the overarching goal for the Airport CRA is to facilitate economic growth through improvements to infrastructure, new construction, business development, and improvements to transportation. Specifically, we had several objectives for this CRA, one of which was to invest in public infrastructure that would help facilitate further development in the area. We're also focused on job creation, specifically with a focus on skilled, high-wage jobs. Another objective for this CRA is the development of vacant or underutilized land. And then finally, growth of the property tax base, which helps us to increase future funding to provide governmental services. Moving on now to the expansion project that Williams International is looking at. So Williams produces gas turbine engines that are used on business jets, cruise missiles, and unmanned aircraft. They are a key supplier for our national defense, but they also serve the commercial sector as well as the defense sector. Williams has been here in Ogden since 1978, and they currently employ more than 900 individuals here in Ogden. Their facilities have also grown over the years and now represent about 400,000 square feet of manufacturing space. The proposed expansion project would add 100,000 square feet to this manufacturing facility, and it would create more than 300 high-wage, high-tech jobs, primarily in manufacturing. The expansion would also generate approximately $1 billion in investment in Ogden operations for Williams. This is a competitive site search project, so Williams has also been considering taking this expansion project to a couple of different states primarily in the South, including Louisiana, Texas, and Florida. As they've looked at different sites around the country, Williams has noted that there are a couple of challenges they're seeing with the site here in Ogden. One is that the cost of labor and other operating costs here in Utah have increased over the years that they've been operating. And in comparison to some of the other sites that were on the table in the South, the costs are a bit higher here. Additionally, they have some pretty significant upgrades to the electrical infrastructure that are required for them to actually complete this expansion here in Ogden. So with those challenges in mind, Williams approached both the state of Utah and Ogden City to see if there would be some funding support to help them complete this expansion project. Late last year, the state approved Williams for an ed-tiff incentive, and that is essentially a post-performance rebate of up to 30% of the new state tax revenues the project is going to generate over 20 years. So that will include their corporate income tax here in the state of Utah, payroll tax, and state sales tax as well. So likewise, we've been working with them on the local side of things and considering a local tax increment financing incentive to support this project. Our TIF incentives are based on the new property tax revenues that the project would generate. So with Williams' projected investment of $1 billion over the life of the project, that investment would generate close to $32 million in local TIF. What we're proposing for this participation agreement is, first, an investment in public infrastructure at the Ogden Hinckley Airport. That would be $5.5 million for a new 24-inch waterline. Right now, we have a waterline that actually runs across the airfield and under one of our runways, and then it also continues across Williams' property. It's not an issue for the current expansion, but future expansion opportunities could really be hindered by the location of that waterline. So that's not a direct incentive to Williams, but it is a commitment that we would make to invest in that infrastructure to support the airport as well as the Williams project and future growth opportunities. We're also proposing a direct incentive to Williams. The first component of that would be $17 million in TIF to support electrical infrastructure improvements that Williams would make. That supports not only their expansion, but it actually frees up the capacity on the power circuit that they're using currently. So that power would then become available for other users in the area. So we see that really as an investment in infrastructure that, yes, benefits the Williams expansion, but also has benefits to other users in the area. The second component of that direct incentive would be $5 million in TIF in consideration of the significant job creation that Williams is proposing to undertake, as well as their ongoing commitment to job training activities and helping to make sure that those new high-wage jobs will be available to Ogden residents. And then just quickly here, wanted to share a little bit about kind of the anticipated outcomes from this project and kind of how that TIF mechanism works. So the taxing entities will continue to receive property tax revenues from the current value of Williams' facility. That's what we call the base value, those property tax revenues will continue to come through to the taxing entities. Next, we look at the new property tax revenues or increment that the project is going to generate. The taxing entities have passed through when they set their participation rates in the CRA. So for example, the school district is participating at 85%, the county at 75% in the overall CRA. That means that the remainder of that will be passed through to them from the new revenues that the project is going to generate. So the school district would receive 15% of the new tax increment, and the county would receive 25% based on those negotiated participation rates. After we take out those pass-throughs, 20% of the tax increment goes to the RDA Housing Fund, and those are funds that have to be spent on income-targeted housing. They don't have to be spent in this project area, but they do need to be dedicated to that housing. And then the remainder is what we have available to use as development incentive. At the end of the CRA, all of that new tax increment will come back onto the tax rolls and will flow through to the taxing entities as well. And again, we just want to emphasize that this level of investment, this new property tax revenue that's being generated from the project would not be possible at this scale without the support of the TIP incentive to help solve some of the challenges that they're looking at here at their Ogden site. So we're really excited about this one, we think this is a great project for Ogden, not just because of the investment it's bringing to our community and that long-term revenue growth, but also for the opportunity that it creates for Ogden residents to obtain high-quality, high-wage opportunities that will help support their families. And with that, take any questions?
Any questions for Sarah? You did mention that there would maybe be another phase of expansion after this initial, this one. Any information about that, or?
Not at this point, but we know that there are certainly, you know, Williams has seen a lot of growth and a lot of demand for the product that they produce. And I think if that growth trend continues, there will be future needs for additional expansion, and there is additional room at their site here in Ogden to accommodate that expansion, especially if we can take care of some of these infrastructure challenges.
That was going to be my next question, is I know they've got some vacant land, but I didn't know if it was going to accommodate all that they've got in the future plan or not.
Yeah, it's sufficient to accommodate the current phase of expansion and leave some room for future growth.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions for Sarah?
Vice Chair Hyer, can I just quickly ask a question? So one of the things that, Sarah, you mentioned that the wages had gotten pretty competitive across the country, or at least ours have gone up. Do we do regular analysis of what's happening in the rest of the country? I just can't, I just, I have a hard time believing that wages have gone up extremely high in Ogden versus anywhere else. When we do our analysis, do we do that, we look at, if those are true statements, I guess?
Yeah, so we do typically, we'll often look at this on, more typically recruitment projects, where we're trying to provide our prospects with good information about what would their labor costs be here in Ogden versus other sites that they may be considering. And, you know, Ogden and Utah are still more affordable than some locations to do business, but the southern states are very competitive as far as labor and operating costs, not just on the labor side, but also on some of the utility costs.
That answer your question?
Yep, thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Sarah, I think that has...
Thank you.
All right, we'll take these one by one. Is there any discussion about either one of these before we vote, before we take a motion? Okay, I'll look for a motion on...
Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve proposed Resolution 2025-3.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Board Member Myers, seconded by Board Member Blair, to adopt proposed Resolution 2025-3. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Blair.
Aye.
Board Member Trabberka.
Aye.
Board Member Graff.
Aye.
Board Member Myers.
Aye.
Acting Chair Hyer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Look for a motion on proposed Resolution 2025-4.
Vice Chair, regarding the proposed participation and incentive agreement with Williams International, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-4.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Graff, seconded by Board Member Blair, to adopt proposed Resolution 2025-4, this is a roll call vote also.
Board Member Trabberka.
Aye.
Board Member Graff.
Aye.
Board Member Myers.
Aye.
Board Member Blair.
Aye.
Acting Chair Hyer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye.
That also is unanimous. Okay, next item is a proposed real estate purchase contract, 2325 Madison Avenue. Mr. Jeremy Smith will be presenting for us today. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Hello, everyone. Happy to be here today to talk to you about the property 2325 Madison Avenue, also known as the Aspen Care Center property. So the proposal before you tonight is for you to adopt a resolution for Ogden City to purchase the property located at 2325 Madison Avenue for the purpose of a future infill development under the Quality Neighborhood Initiative program. Just a quick recap on what that is. So the mission of the Quality Neighborhood Initiative is to stabilize and revitalize Ogden's neighborhoods as neighborhoods of choice by establishing a pattern of public investment that catalyzes desirable and appropriate community development. So as many of you know, revitalization in Ogden is not a new thing. This has been happening since the 90s, early 90s. So back in that time, the city leadership saw a great need for revitalization in our neighborhoods. There was significant disrepair, and so a series of incentives were generated to help move that forward. That moves from everything from historic Jefferson Avenue to one-off buildings here and there to try and improve those neighborhoods. And through the course of time, we've all seen the benefits of those projects that have taken place. About 10 years ago, the Quality Neighborhoods Initiative was formalized, and this gave guidance to help give direction when we're really trying to revitalize the neighborhoods, what to do and the tools to use to do that. One of the biggest tools used is infill development. You'll recognize a few of the communities we've done recently, as Stone Hill, Oakden, Bungalows. We're working right now on one called Sycamore Cove. Also purchased a parcel of land out on north, it's actually outside the east-central area for a future infill development. All of these projects were bought and developed for the purpose of revitalization, and that really is what Quality Neighborhoods Initiative is all about. And so, when we look at that program in the context of this property at 2325 Madison Avenue, we have to determine, is this a good candidate for this program? Can it do what we've done with other similar developments? And so just to look at it as a comparison, as you know, it's in the east-central neighborhood, in close proximity to both Stone Hill and Oakden. A lot of investments been put into the east-central, trying to bring this back to where it was once at one time, and after years and years of neglect, trying to stabilize this neighborhood, the city's invested a lot of resources into this neighborhood, and it's turning around. A lot of improvements have occurred there, but still has a long way to go. So we look at the location, it's a great candidate for that. It is similar to the other projects where it has a fully depreciated structure on it, just like the commercial building at Oakden and the failing school where Stone Hill was. They were moved and replaced with housing opportunities. And so when we look at this site, what could we do there? What would be the greatest and best use of really trying to turn and inject some life into this neighborhood? And we feel that an infill development would do that, provide homeownership opportunities as well as revitalize the neighborhood. So, a couple of the concepts that, these are not, we're not looking for approval on these, but just an idea of what potentially could be there. It could range from anything from single-family homes to townhomes, but would both be targeted towards homeownership. And on this site, like I said, this is, these are just some concepts that could be entertained, but are very, very high-level. And then as far as the terms of the acquisition of where this comes down to and the contract, the property has a cost value, a price cost value of $2,000,010. And since Weber Housing Authority has purchased the building, they've incurred additional expenses through their disownership, maintenance, and some of the investment they've put into it, and through a negotiated agreement to try and make them whole. And as best as possible, it was negotiated that the purchase price would be $2,200,000, which would all be funded through the Quality Neighborhoods Program Initiative. And so it's with that that the administration recommends a purchase of the property for a new infill development under the guidelines of the Quality Neighborhood Initiative program. a new infill development under the guidelines of the Quality Neighborhood Initiative program. And so, if you, the schedule going forward, this is kind of outlines where we've been. On February 27th, the real estate purchase contract between Weber Housing Authority and Ogden City RDA was executed. On today, 3/11, the RDA board will have an opportunity to vote on the resolution to purchase the property. After that, there's a due diligence period which expires on 3/20, and then March 28th is the scheduled closing date. And that's all I have for tonight. Happy to answer any questions or talk about any of those details.
Any questions for Jeremy? Hey, thank you.
Oh, sorry, I was a little slow on the button. I was wondering, Jeremy, I think that you also received the communication about people trying to apply for this property to be a historic landmark. Do you have any comment on that or?
I don't have a lot of comment at that point. I know that there was an application submitted. I haven't had a chance to really review it. I have limited understanding of the, of the process of that, but it would have to go through a landmarks approval process and city council vote for it to be approved. But there may be others who can speak to that more directly.
And I can't remember, like, the timeline on the different meetings or when that application would become, you know, come forward to the historic landmarks.
Yeah, I know they have a timeline, like you submit it one day, and then you've got, I don't see, I don't know, three weeks to get onto the next thing, so that it probably, any of those timelines would not fall in with the scheduled deadlines that we have under the real estate purchase contracts.
Do they meet monthly?
Right.
Just wanted to clarify for people.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions?
Anything else?
I did see Ms. Beatles come in as the other party to this, this transaction. Would you like to say anything about this? Okay, just, I would offer, so.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hayer. I'm just curious if there is anyone in there that can speak or about the landmarks process? And if so, do we need to delay our process of signing this repsee in order to make sure that, that the process is followed?
I think that would be somebody like Borden, and I don't see him here. Mara, do you have thoughts? Travis? Yeah, I see him here. Yeah. Or Gary. Oh, yeah, we've got, yeah, Jeremy.
Oh, Jeremy. So, it's hard to tell who's behind the posts. We need them to be clear so we can see through, yeah.
I can't speak for the, the entire process and everything that necessarily needs to go through, but I think the one thing I can, I have not actually even seen it yet, but my understanding, the application was filed today. And so, you actually already have this in front of you for consideration, and I would want to defer actually probably to legal to look at the timing of those different things, but I believe you can take action on this, or you could defer action on this and have us look at that. But the timing of the two applications, like I said, where the one was just submitted today, this is already on your agenda, and so you, you do have the ability to, to take action in any order that you want. As, I know that's not exactly the question that was answered as far as landmarks, timing in the process and go through that. We can get all that information back to you. I don't have that right in front of me today. Again, I haven't even seen the application yet at this time. I just found out one came in.
Okay. Maybe we could ask legal if there's anything we should know as, as we proceed forward.
I don't have the facts that you're asking me to analyze, and so I don't know of anything that would stop you from approving this action tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just one other thing to consider. So, the due diligence period gives that window for exploration of things. So, we technically have till the 20th, and you could dissolve the agreement if it came to that. So, that is, that's something to think about as well.
All right, Jeremy. All right, thank you. Kind of, it seems to me that where we're trying to make a, as quick a turnaround as we can to accommodate the Weber Housing Authority, perhaps we shouldn't delay it for just delay's sake. So, did you have any comments, Hayer?
I just wanted to say that I think that the most damaging consequence of, of this action would be to the Housing Authority, and that's what I'm concerned about. So, I would recommend if we can proceed and use the due diligence period as much as we can to, and I, and I'd certainly exercise my own discretion and, and get advice and consultation from the team and from legal during the process. But I would, I would prefer that we continue on our side in good faith at least, and we'll use the processes and tools that we have at our disposal to make the best outcome possible without hurting the Housing Authority.
Thank you for that.
Vice Chair, I do have a comment too, if there's another discussion.
Board Member Trabberka.
Sure, well, I feel like, you know, I waited to make a little bit of a statement about this, so I thought I would do it now. I feel like I need to declare a conflict of interest, and let me just give you a little bit of a overview of that. I want to just take a little step back and share my own experience about this complicated issue. I know that there's so many different things that have been said or implied that are not always totally correct, and that's on all sides during the entire process. So, I'm just going to focus on my personal experience, I'm living in the neighborhood, so that you know it's true from my perspective, and may not be everyone's perspective. So, you know, firstly, I supported the Weber Housing Authority project because it was developed by experts in serving this particular population who I worked very closely with over the years. And this population is the mentally and/or physically disabled that are living unhoused or, or have a challenge becoming stably housed, right? People who live in my neighborhood have asked me over the years of my service to please, please do something about the problem of folks who are living without shelter in our community. They say, you know, what can be done to solve the problem? You know, can they go to jail for doing criminal activity, or should they go to the hospital because they have, you know, some of these challenges with substance use and different things like that? And I've always responded by saying, we're working on it, right? We need to create some evidence-based initiatives that really do make a difference and get to the root of the issue. Because to me, sending people to jail for living unhoused does not ultimately solve the neighborhood problem or our community problem, right? The jail doesn't have the infrastructure to solve the issue alone, and when our sheriff asked the community to support building that infrastructure, our community said no. And I don't condone everything that was in that proposal, but it would have been a start, right, to create some mental health support and more mental health support at the jail. And I also want to make sure I'm representing the renters who live in my neighborhood, who we often hear about. And we heard from Andy Beatles about how several of the people who would be a good fit for this project had historically been taken advantage of by their friends, friends, in their current apartments, right? This means that other residents of those complexes experienced those challenges as well. And because we're not supporting the new project, those folks will continue to live in a scattered site model in east-central in my neighborhood. So, until a new location is found, this problem will continue because there's nowhere else in the county to house them, which is a shame. So, on the topic of the Quality Neighborhoods Program, I'm planning to recuse myself from this vote because I don't feel I can vote for continuation of a policy that, that benefits me directly. I do absolutely appreciate the idea of wanting to do good and having the best intentions for our community when this program started. Over the past decade, though, as my family and I have worked very hard to restore a historic home on Jefferson Avenue, for a variety of reasons, we decided to live there. One is we love historic assets, assets like our home. We wanted to create an experience for our children that included living within walking distance of downtown, you know, like the farmer's market, the library, restaurants, and performance spaces like the Egyptian Theater, and also to live in a neighborhood with other people who also enjoy a similar lifestyle. I also wanted to live somewhere where people of a variety of incomes and different backgrounds live. So, when we purchased our home, it was on the tail end of the Ogden City effort to purchase the larger homes on historic Jefferson Avenue that had primarily become divided into accommodated apartments over the years. The effort was meant to reestablish single-family homeownership and create a more stable and safe neighborhood, although we did not buy our house from Ogden City at the low rates that were offered, some as low as $65,000, but from a private owner in the middle of the renovation. So, our house was about $190,000, if you can imagine that time. Because of the Quality Neighborhoods Program's success over the years, our home has increased in value substantially. Of course, we have put in much time and money into the house over the years as well. We've put that effort in. But in our most recent appraisal of our property, it has increased in value by over $600,000, three times its original value. This means that my tax bill has also gone up in relation to that. For me, this is not that big of a deal. I mean, my personal salary has also increased by about nine times, which is not too difficult when you start as a teacher and leave that profession for a corporate job based in Salt Lake City. But most other people in my neighborhood have not seen that kind of change in their incomes. When their property values increase, their taxes increase, or their rents increase to cover the costs. The increases in property values have also caused many of the adjacent homes to be restored or flipped, so, so the program has worked. I'm excited for the people who were or are, are able to purchase a home due to the Quality Neighborhoods Program, but I also continue to wonder about those who have been displaced throughout the years of the program. How many of those same Ogden City residents have benefited from the program? And when will enough be enough? When will, when the, when will the property values need to stop growing at a manipulated rate? We heard that the next neighborhoods to be focused may be on the west or the north sides, and I hope we will ensure that the people who currently live in those neighborhoods are the ones who benefit directly from these efforts. So, I hope that we set up that evaluation process before it starts. Just bear with me. My street has changed over the years. We went from about 95% renter occupied to over 90% owner occupied, single-family homes in a pretty swift movement. But the status is now that some of those homes have returned to rentals within the same decade, and I'm not kidding. I can point them out to you. And why is that? Because some homeowners who have the ability to do so have purchased additional properties and now rent them out. I speculate that they might have been able to leverage their investments in my neighborhood to make this possible, but it makes me realize that I am benefiting from these efforts in a disproportionate way too. I cannot in good conscience condone the rhetoric that continues to vilify renters, or those who live below the property level, or those who are living without a stable home. We might be the very ones causing some of these problems. Some might argue that property owners have worked hard or taken on risk of the real estate speculation, so they deserve to gain financially from their tireless efforts to improve Ogden City. Well, according to my observation, it has already worked out pretty good for them. So, I'm going to recuse myself and leave the room while you vote.
Okay. Thanks for your comments. All right, do we have a motion?
Seeing no movement, Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt proposed Resolution 2025-5.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Blair, or Board Member Blair, and seconded by Board Member Graff. This is a roll call vote.
Vice Chair Hayer, can I, can I make a few comments?
Yes, please do.
Before we, we vote?
Yes, go ahead.
So, as described, it's obvious that housing is a very complicated issue, and it is, I mean, Councilmember Trabberka said it very well. I mean, it's not something that is just, something easy that goes along with building more houses or, or having renters or increasing property values. She described actually the complicated issues around, around housing. And unhoused individuals, it's just as a complicated issue. And I, I think that one of the hardest pieces for me is to try to figure out how to make sure that we as a city are financially stable. I'm very disappointed in, in a lot of reasons, there are a lot of ways that literally two people, two people reached out to me. One was Andy Beatles, and the other was an individual that has been very vocal in this endeavor. Other than that, no one else has reached out to understand why I think there's a bigger issue and why I'm going to vote the way I vote tonight. I also want to be really clear, and I want people to understand, the council asked the mayor, he has been under attack for a lot of different things about this very issue. The council asked the mayor to try to figure out, had him come up with, and he described it really well. There, there, I, I said a win-win situation, but he described it very well the last time, and that is that nobody wins in this situation. But we asked them as a council, or asked administration to come up with some options. This has, happens to be one of them. A lot of misinformation, we heard that, Councilmember Trabberka had said that. We also have invested, and I think you are seeing this, is at least $45 million in this area, and we're starting to see the fruits of that. So, by increasing the amount of money in that area, whether it's infill projects or just trying to take an old school and make it new, we're seeing the fruits of that. And this is a neighborhood where it really needs some love and help. And, and I'm just going to say, I've been very disappointed in some of the people that have come forward, and a list of all of the Weber Housing projects or even low-income projects that are being built outside of Ogden. Not one in North Ogden, not one in Marriott Sladeville, not one in Plain City, not, very few in Far West, very few in Roy, very few in South Ogden. And where a city has a housing authority already, it's very hard and difficult to continue to put more and more and more onto the burden of all the taxpayers that are paying into property taxes. So, I've personally been attacked, and nobody other than the two people have reached out to me to ask me why I'm voting the way I'm going to vote tonight. I think this is a very good compromise, and I hope that other people see that.
Thank you, Chair White. Any other comments before we take the vote? Okay, we'll ask for the vote.
Board Member Graff.
Aye.
Board Member Myers.
Aye.
Board Member Blair.
Aye.
Acting Chair Hayer.
Aye.
Chair White.
Aye.
That is unanimous, and that passes. Next steps, I guess, we'll, we're just going to go through the due diligence process, do our normal due diligence, and I guess you'll be looking into the historic designation issue that has been arrived today.
That's great. Okay. Can I just say something also? I mean, just to echo what Chair White had said, I would like to thank Mayor Nadolski and the administration for, I mean, the work that they did all along the way, right? I mean, this, this came to us, and as we've all learned, there was a lot of factors, and it was a complicated issue, and I appreciate Mayor Nadolski's leadership and willingness to work with other partners and to come up with something that works for everyone. We've, we've said it might not be, no one, as the mayor and Marsh, or Chair White both said, it's hard to find winners in this, but I do believe this, this allows the county to, to move forward and, and to be made whole again, and so that they can look elsewhere and look for something that works better for them, and, and it also provides the city with an opportunity to continue to reinvest, you know, in that area. So, I do appreciate the mayor and the administration, and I appreciate Bob Hunter coming and, and representing his side also, and, and also being able to sit and to, and to put differences aside and try to find something that works, and I appreciate that, that effort, and so just want to make sure that that's mentioned, but.
Thank you, Board Member Blair.
Vice Chair Hayer.
Yes. Board Member Myers.
It is with a heavy heart that I vote in favor of this. I think it's a, a good alternative, and I don't think we have the votes to have it passed otherwise. But speaking from someone who has very close friends and family members who experienced mental health, I think the concept that Weber Housing Authority brought forward was excellent and, and doable, and I'm sorry they didn't have the support to pull it off, and my heart's with you, Andy Beatles, and with your organization, and commend you, and hopefully that we can move forward in some other meaningful way to serve that population because they certainly need that type of service. because they certainly need that type of service. Two other personal comments that I'd like to make about that. I served on the Ogden Community Foundation from 2007 through about 2016, and we were one of the groups that purchased homes and refurbished them. And it was, at that time, we were purchasing homes on the steps of the Weber County building for lack of payment of taxes. And it was a beautiful thing to go through and work on that redevelopment of inner-city Ogden. And I can tell you today that it has made that and many other projects, Ogden City inclusive, have made an incredible amount of progress in redeveloping this neighborhood. So complicated issue, there's many sides to it. I just, but it is with a heavy heart that I vote in favor of this, but I think it's the most amenable direction that we can go at this point in time. And just want to express my personal opinion about that, so thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Myers. I'd like to chime in a little bit also. I think that this was a project that was fraught with issues from the beginning, but, and got more complicated as it went along. There has been some criticism of, recent criticism, that we have, that this is a waste of money. And I want to assure the public that this Quality Neighborhoods Fund has been in place for 10 years. It is exactly the kind of thing that we use that kind, this money for. It isn't for street repairs. It isn't for stoplight fixes. It isn't for any of those kind of things. It is for this exact purpose and has been for a decade now. So it is, I think it was about as good a compromise as could have been arrived at. And I appreciate the mayor and the Weber Housing Authority and the board and those parties who came together to work this out. I appreciate those efforts. I think we have all learned a lot. Oftentimes, some of our lessons cost us, and this is no exception to that. But hopefully, we can join arms, because I believe we all have the same basic intent. None of us want to do harm to those who are less fortunate. And so we'll lock arms and plow forward and do the best we can. Ogden has done, and, you know, Chair White kind of pointed it out, Ogden has done the lion's share of this type of work in the county and will continue to do so. We've got no reason to change that. We do like to make sure that our housing goals are kept while we do it. And we appreciate Ogden Housing Authority, because they've kind of locked in on those. So anyway, but good luck to everybody going forward. Hopefully, we can make the best of what we can do. All right. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a three-minute limit. It will be on the, just behind us, or on your screen if you are online. In fairness to everyone, I will cut you off at three minutes if you exceed that. So I would rather not do that, but please, so please watch the clock. Who would like to address the council?
Hello, I didn't think we'd be seeing each other so soon, but matters come up. Again, I'm Kerry Wayne, your neighbor across the street over in Marriott Sladeville. It's home to the Boyer Bird Bath, the northeast Was, I'm sorry, the northwest Ogden Water Pad, Nadolsky's Mile of Denial. And I'm here because, again, the rains from last week brought the water up to the edge of the roadway, which I promised you I'd be back if that be the case. And during the time I've been coming here, which is almost five years, asking you to do something about the standing water along 1200 West, I've been told many, many things. I've been told it's been fixed. I've been told, "Don't come here, because this isn't the place." I've been told that I shouldn't talk to the mayor or his staff about it. Last year, when I spoke to the mayor about flooding, or the standing water, he said, "Everybody has standing water." And it's true, they did. The difference between our standing water and everyone else's is ours was man-made. It was done during the time that you had your warehouses built over at BDO. And so what we're asking is, is that you address it. Did you take care of it? In 2022, Mark Johnson came forward and said, "I'm going to fix this. I've got you all a copy. It's in the Standard Examiner, so I'm going to fix this." Nothing happened. Not a single shovel full of dirt was turned. And again, when I asked the mayor about that, he said, "Well, Mark Johnson's a liar, so I don't have to do that." And I go like, "Well, you know, he was on this, what, 16 years with you people? 16 years?" And all of a sudden, now he's a liar. And so we don't have to live up to our commitments. And I think that's wrong. I don't know how many of you remember, 85 years ago, that was Marriott Sladeville Farms over there at BDO. They were taken by the government. Some were sold, some was in the domain. But again, you've been able to, 20 years ago, property was given to Ogden City. You were able to skim $15 million last year off of that property. And when I was here last week, you gave a million dollars to the East Central Ogden to improve their neighborhood. I don't think it's fair that my neighborhood becomes collateral damage for Ogden's development. Boyer said they'd fix it if Ogden City told them to do it. That was the last thing, the article prior to this one. And again, I've got you another letter here that goes back to 2016 that a lot of the issues that I've been asking to get taken care of, Blake Wallen was going to do it. But Boyer won't do it, because they don't feel they have to. And again, it's being a good neighbor. But I want you to know that I'm willing to invest, and I'll put in the first $10.
Thank you, Kerry.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Bramwell. I wanted to stand today and thank you for your vote on the Aspen Care Facility that you did today. And I also want to thank the mayor and his administration for flying into action and coming up with an appropriate solution to the very large problem that Weber County put us in. And how unfortunate for us that Weber County put Ogden City and its residents and its property owners into the position that we have had to be in. I just found out about this about four months ago, but it seems that there's a lot of people that have known about it longer than that. But, you know, none of this would have happened if Weber County hadn't have purchased a private property, a private tax-paying, money-earning business property from a private owner and turned it into public, or, you know, government-owned property. Now, we all get an opinion about it, and it seems like none of us have the same opinion about it. So how sad for all of us that we're now thrown into this ring of, you know, boxing ring of having to fight it out over our opinions about a government-owned property that four years ago, and forevermore before that in the history of the United States, was privately owned. And none of us needed to have an opinion about it. I believe in private property rights, and I believe in private property ownership. And I think that this property could have continued to be successful in that capacity. But how unfortunate for us that Weber County has now made Ogden City hate each other over this issue. But I'm pleased with your vote today. I want to thank you. It will be positive for me to not have homeless people living in that close proximity to my property. My property values won't go down because of that now. They already have gone down, because I've been a crime victim so many times of the homeless population and the homeless population that's now housed in apartments in my neighborhood population, and their friends, and their drug dealers, and all of those types of people who have continued to thrive in my neighborhood. And I wish we could find a solution to that, because I'm really, really tired of it. And I don't have the capacity as a private property owner to deal with those kind of things. But I am pleased with your vote today. I hope we don't have a lot more drama. It sounds like new drama started today, that now we're going to have a lot more arguments over. So, but thank you for your vote today.
Thanks, Teresa.
Hello, my name is Emma. I'm a resident on Ogden. Sorry, I'm shaking a little bit. I just wanted to voice my disappointment today about the Weber Housing Authority project. People deserve better in this community, especially homeless people. And it's not going away anytime soon. And I think that's something that I keep going back to, is projects like this were researched. They were looked into by Weber Housing. And if something like this is denied and shut down, in my mind, I'm just wondering, and maybe this is a question for you, what's the plan for homeless individuals in this city, in this area? If something like this gets shot down, what is going to work in the future? Do you have a plan? Are you working with Ogden Housing? Are you working with Weber Housing on other things? I know that the location wasn't ideal. However, I just, again, like, I don't understand why something like this gets shot down when it seemed very clearly thought through. And I'm just disappointed. And I know a lot of community members who really were excited about this and wanted to make it work, wanted to make these individuals feel like they had a home, feel like they were safe. That's what we all deserve. Sorry, I'm going to get emotional. But I think we all deserve that. And it's sad that some people don't have that. They're exposed to the elements all the time. They don't have resources. They don't have food. And I think we need to go back to that. We need to have empathy for these people. We need to understand what they're going through, even if we haven't gone through it ourselves. And so I think we need to go back to that. So anyway, I'm just disappointed. But I really want to leave it, leave here, by saying and asking, "What is your plan? Is there a plan in the future for something like this? Because we need it in this community. I think we want it. There's a lot of people who want it. So I would suggest that you come up with something that works, because we need it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Emma. We do have one online. I guess we could take Heath Sato now.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. I wanted to clarify something about Councilmember White's comments tonight, particularly saying only two people reached out to her. I know I reached out to her on this topic via email. I know of at least two personal friends that reached out, and I'm sure that it wasn't just my friends that reached out. You know, I was disappointed in the emailed response, because at least her response, so I know she saw it. I'd like to thank Councilmember Tridurka for her comments. I thought they were well said, well thought out. Housing the unhoused is not a complicated issue when it costs us nothing. Not housing them will cost us. First, what we're having to pay for this property to quote-unquote "make them whole", and for the added pressures on our emergency services, et cetera. I hear people repeatedly referring to this as a homeless shelter, and they are not corrected. I also want to know if anyone at the city is already speaking to a developer about that property. In that same neighborhood, we just recently gave one developer a million dollars in land plus $800,000 to build their own infrastructure using a sham of a public process. We're all aware of it at this point. The game was rigged. We all know about it. I want to make sure nothing like that is occurring now. I hope not. I don't think it is, but I would like to promise that that's not happening. Back to the whole making someone whole, but that's just a legal term. That means to restore someone to the state they were in before, to compensate someone for a financial loss, for example, or an injury. It doesn't mean they didn't lose anything. We're losing a fantastic opportunity with the perfect property, an existing building, to help people in exchange for only the amount of money that they put into this property. We can't replicate this. We can't give them the same opportunity. We're not going to get this back. So we're going to throw another perfectly good building into a landfill just so we can prevent 25 disabled adults from using that property at no cost to the city. And finally, I still haven't heard a good reason for why the city didn't figure out their legal options regarding this project until the last minute, which created all this strife and unnecessary crisis of time. Was it our city attorney? Who dropped the ball on this? Thanks.
Thanks, Eve.
Hey, everybody. Sean Bishop, Ogden resident. I'm going to talk fast, because I have a lot to say. I'm here to talk about Aspen. I want to say first that I take offense to my neighborhood being described as lifeless. This neighborhood is vital. It's a gem now. It may be hard to see as you drive through it to get to this building, but it's a gem now. And Ms. Bramwell, she and I have the same degree from Weber State in musical theater, aka drama, so let's go. I've also worked in high-pressure corporate HR for a long time, so I love a process. Also, to Chair White's point, Ogden Housing Authority's mission statement does not include homelessness at all. They don't do homeless work, let alone the most intense homeless work, which is permanent supportive housing. So that's something that's come up a lot. Anyway, I've heard many of you say that this is not a suitable use for this residential location. I kept in this residential location. I kept waiting for you to provide a concrete reason. So I did some digging just last night about the history of this exact building. It opened in 1964. The county land use code 49057 is, quote, "Homes for retired, handicap, rest, convalescent, and nursing." A really cool flyer from the '64 open house says that the primary use is for disabled adults with a secondary purpose of aged and senile. In 1988, it was bought by somebody else. And there's a really cool article from the Standard Examiner with a quote that says, "Aspen owners and employees are proud of the special care unit for Alzheimer's patients, the only one in Weber County where the residents can walk freely and are able to enjoy the beautifully landscaped fenced area. Residents require less restriction and are able to move about the unit freely because of the physical security of the special care wing with its highly-trained staff. The north wing, with its caring staff, houses residents that can no longer stay in their environment or need more intense care." Does that sound familiar? This building was made for disabled adults. So to say that it's not an appropriate use is just 62 years of evidence against that point. You've had experts from the Lantern House and dozens of other service providers stand right where I stand and tell you that this facility will make their neighborhood safer and make their work easier. This building has been meticulously maintained. It is not derelict. It is not deprecating. It's also very upsetting to see you move so quickly on this purchase agreement after months and months of delaying a vote you could have held months ago. To borrow from the civility statement, "That insults us, who are here working to proceed." It is also insulting to yet again hear that our efforts of public engagement are in bad faith and riddled with personal attacks. Earlier today, I included you all in an emailed application to designate this property as a historic landmark. I also intend to apply for National Estate Registry. Why on earth is this building not protected? It is a historic beacon. I'm going to skip ahead. Waiting for someone else to act is not going to work. Nobody else is doing this work. We know you can never please anyone, but you can always listen better than you did yesterday. You can always have more courage than you did even a moment ago. Be bold, have courage. I look forward to working with you on this application to preserve this neighborhood gem, which has historically and securely housed disabled adults who would have otherwise had nowhere to go. I'm not working against any of you. I'm fighting with everything I have against the factors that drive people into homelessness. There's a big difference. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brooke Barrigan, Ogden City resident. I wasn't planning on making a comment tonight. I just wanted to be here so that Andy and her hard-working crew didn't feel alone and weren't mourning alone. But as I'm sitting here, I can't be quiet. To the mayor and to the council members who insist on scolding the public for making comments just because... just because we disagree with you doesn't mean that anyone's being mean to you. And the sensitivity is a little bit, like, off-putting. Also, people may feel discouraged and not want to come in and make comment because you, like Councilmember White said, are disappointed. We should avoid, as leaders in the community, we should avoid talking to the public that way. And also to Councilmember White, and actually to the whole city council, I tried twice to engage with you, Councilmember White and all of you, but received no response. And I'm naive, so maybe it's just standard that you don't respond to public emails. But I won't, I can't sit and have her say that no one reached out to her when I was definitely someone who did, and I know many other people who did. But those things are just symptomatic of why I'm here tonight. I'm here to speak for my family and to say unequivocally that our hearts are broken with your decision and with your lack of integrity, Mayor. We are thankful for Sean's heavy-heartedness and for Angela's integrity, but so heartbroken at the rest of you. But what we feel doesn't matter. My heart is broken for those who remain in need as we prioritize capitalists like Ms. Teresa, who was just here, over human beings who remain in need. Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. Anyone else? Welcome, Mr. Hunter.
My name is Robert Hunter. I live in Ogden City, and this is the second Tuesday in a row I've missed St. Dennis Medical. So hopefully next Tuesday I'll get to watch it. I expressed some feelings last week about my disappointment. I'm not gonna continue that. I just want to say, I cannot tell you how much I respect Matt and Angela Choburka for their investment in East Central Ogden. And Sean Bishop and Taylor Canuth for their investment in East Central Ogden. And all of the other people who've taken the risk to do that, to bring back our beautiful central city, to the Myers family who invested in properties years ago and have tried to improve properties there. That having been said, and Chair White, I don't want to have contention with you, but I want to correct some things that you said earlier. First of all, Harrisville has taken on a homeless project which is outside Ogden City limits. With great courage, Mayor Tate decided she would accept the Family Promise Project in Harrisville, and we appreciate that from her. Also, I repeated it to all of you, but it never gets repeated again, is that Davis County, for the first time, is building a 60-person homeless unit, which Davis County has not been supportive of it in the past, but they're starting to do that. The state of Utah is also looking for a site and will build outside of Weber County a homeless shelter that will house anywhere from 1,200 to 2,000 people. So there are those outside of Ogden that are working on it. We've come to a good, I think, understanding with His Honor and with you as members of the council that we will work with you as Weber Human Services and Weber Housing Authority at WACOG to talk to other cities about carrying their responsibilities as well. We have to salvage something out of these, out of these kinds of things, not negative, but positive. And I hope that in the future, we can continue to work as partners. And lastly, I forgot what it was. I'm getting old. So let me just end with this. Even though you voted as I would not have wanted you to vote tonight, we'll still respect you in the morning. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Anyone else? Welcome, Mr. Pete.
Travis Pete, Ogden resident. I'd like to just be mindful of our neighbors, essentially Marriott Sladeville, Roy, all the others. There was a time when even at the airport, Roy rezoned, but they were not qualified, they were not required by any statute to notify the neighboring city for their rezone right adjacent to the airport. And so then there became this thing that said, oh, wait, can we start talking to each other a little bit more, just like we've done now on the north end of town? And Roy has now consistently done it around the airport. Marriott Sladeville isn't obligated to follow our plans, but I think we are. One of the things is, it says View Corridor and Vista Preservation. And some of the buildings that we've bumped to the west end of the BDO complex have provided permanent shade during the winter months to Marriott Sladeville. And yet, in our own city plan, we guarantee light and access to light. And so I think that that's some of the things that I've noticed even with even some of the site planning that could be happening, possibly in East Central, some of the other aspects. We have a caring neighbor that was in the process of providing housing for a mother-in-law and father-in-law. And as that was happening, we said, can the site be adjusted slightly? And they said, oh, let me, let's look at this. And they adjusted it, and it turned out gangbusters for both parties involved, us and them. And they ended up with a greater patio space and less of a wind tunnel, and we ended up with View Corridor and Vista Preservation because of a simple moving of a building eight feet. And that's where compassion and companionship and entering into the project early can happen. And so if there is a standing pool at BDO, let's fix it. There's no reason for that drainage to not have a retention, onsite underground retention if it needs it. Fairly simple. We have this little company called WR White Pipe that builds things like that for a living. And I think that there's some of those types of things that could be easily remedied instead of mosquito ponds. And then as far as the neighborhood initiatives, I've seen a lot of benefit come from that. And I would just encourage for this property that if reuse of the building's a possibility back to a care center, a care facility, then let's put that on the market as a care facility rather than demolition. I've seen a lot of demolition in the neighborhood. And then the other side of it is just, thanks for the efforts. It's so good. And what I've seen, the personal attacks, I feel that's bad. I'd like to shoulder them as much as you shoulder them, because it's an attack on me and my neighborhood, too. We just spent $11,000 more on our roof replacing it than we spent for the entire house. So that's how monies change. And so I just thank you for your time, thank you for shouldering it. That's what, so to speak, sadly you elected yourselves to do. If I can share back part of that, I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
Laura Lewis, Ogden City resident. Well, everything's changed. I wanted to talk to you about my dirty water. Now I feel compelled to get involved in the fight here for, over the property. I think you guys are taking a bad rap. I really do. I was impartial on this until I learned a little bit more about the project, and then I kind of sided with the neighborhood. But I felt like you guys, I've never heard one of you criticize anybody, so I feel like that was very unfair comments. I have heard the other side be somewhat derogatory about anybody that disagreed with them. But I think you guys have done a great job, and I've disagreed with you many times. We've come here and argued about a lot of things, but I never saw it sink to the level that this has sunk to. It has become personal attacks. We've lost sight of what this was about, the project. It was a good project. And yeah, someplace, let's find the right place for that. I think everybody in Ogden wants to help the homeless. And just because we don't agree with this project doesn't mean we hate the homeless or that we're too stupid to understand the concept of this project, because we do. We just don't think this is the right place. And I appreciate you guys doing the right thing and following through with the city plan and elevating that neighborhood. I've lived here for 72 years, and I've watched that area deteriorate. And it's nice to see it coming back. So let's not jeopardize that. Let's find the right location for this, if it falls back on Ogden City. I think it's great that you're coming up with the money to do this. I think that's wonderful. I don't really like it that now we're spending more money buying property, but it was the right thing to do here. But I'm really disheartened at what I've seen come forth in this meeting, the name-calling and the level this has sunk to. But I'll be back next week to talk about dirty water.
Thanks, Laura. Is there anybody else?
Deborah Darrington, Ogden resident. Hopefully these thoughts come out the way that my heart is feeling. First of all, I want to applaud my neighbor to the east for your boldness and your courage. And I will say that I have always felt listened to by you particularly, even though sometimes our viewpoints may differ. We come from different walks of lives. Our viewpoint is different, our commitments to different groups are different. I also wanted to say to you, Mayor, that it takes a tough man to lead, to lead a city, especially this one with so much diversity and with so much passion and a variance of views. I applaud you and your dear wife and think you're doing a wonderful job. To Madam Chair, who is not sitting here today but was here last week, I went home, and to my children, who are 19 and could care less about politics at the moment, I expressed to them how well it felt to be heard last week, not just myself, but what I observed of everyone. The level of respect from the time that I started attending these meetings years ago to last week was notable, and I congratulate and thank you for that. I see the concerted effort in that. Pointed hand with Aspen. Today, while Angela was walking her two well-behaved dogs across the street from me as we try to train a cattle dog to be a inner-city dog, I said to Angela that her son spends quite a bit of time in our home. And a few weeks ago, it snowed at a time that I told God it shouldn't still be snowing, no matter how long I've lived in Utah. Luca came over shortly after that and expressed how excited he was that it snowed because it guarantees his employment, because he works at a ski resort, and he's a snowboarder. So I leave that with you just because what benefits one and excites one may devastate and frustrate another. I do think that the decision that you made on Aspen, though it still has some work to do on there, that area needs some severe investment. It needs a lot of work, and I personally don't feel, as much as I love the homeless and want to find a place for everyone in this world to live, I don't think that city, that part of the city holds enough air in its raft to support that project in that area, and I passionately feel that. I do have an investment in that area, and with your decision, we'll move forward in trying to find a space for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Looks like Executive Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah, for your remarks. The, I got a whole page of notes to work with here, and I'm not quite sure where to start. But, yeah, it's hard, it can be hurtful, but the job is absolutely 100% been a blessing. And I've said it a million times, every one of you has heard me say it. It's the, it's the best job I've ever had, not because it's fun, because it is fulfilling. It is the hardest job I've ever had, no doubt about it. But I've never cared more about the work that I do every single day, and for that reason, it's a blessing, which does certainly help to overcome critique. Critique is part of the job. It has been particularly hard when those critiques have been personal. That's, part of the job is to get over it, to, I can't control what other people do, I can only control how I respond. So I try to be a model of how we respond to adversity for this city. Certainly nowhere near perfect because I'm a man and I'm human, but this country, this world, this community are experiencing diversity and challenge every day. And I understand that there's a lot of people in our city that are struggling. And I just want to, I want to focus on the things that I can't control, and I can only control the way that I respond. I can't control the way that other people do. As it relates to the mile of denial, I've looked into Kerry Wayne's water situation. I want you guys to know that. I want to point out that I used to be an aquatic biologist, actually. I have a master's degree in fisheries biology, research emphasis in stream ecology. I studied fluvial geomorphology, hydrology. I've got an aquatics background. I went to his house and spoke with him personally about it. I got bit by mosquitoes while I was there, there's no doubt. But I also spent time and looked in each of these ponds. And you know what I didn't find? Not one mosquito larvae. I know what mosquito larvae look like, because I've studied them. I've actually even studied ways to combat mosquito larvae using kombucha. It's a fish species that eats mosquito larvae. Not one did I see in there. Nope, sure didn't. You know what I also did? So while I was there, I pulled up an aerial map of the area that Mr. Wayne lives in. You know what I found? I found wetlands and sumpy ground all around his house, consistent with the kind of wetlands and the kind of aquatic environment that would breed mosquitoes. Shocking. I'm sorry that you're getting mosquito problems there, but they ain't coming from there. They ain't coming from the mile of denial. So I recommend that you look at the mile and quit your denial over where that's coming from. I'll also say that Mr. Kerry Wayne does not speak for me. I don't ever recall saying that, even though me and Mr. Johnson have had our differences, no doubt. I do not ever recall saying that. I will say that I have spent every day of this job living up to the commitments that Ogden City's made. I can't tell you how many times I've been asked to live up to a commitment, some kind of verbal commitment. I said, where is it in writing? Where is it? If it's in writing, I'll live up to it, and I have. Including, shockingly, I made a commitment to Mr. Wayne that I would work with the Weber Area Council of Governments, WACOG, to explore transportation options, transportation projects and options for that area. I asked our staff, Taylor Nielsen's here today representing, he's our city engineer, he and our staff worked with the staff at Marriott Sladeville, and they devised a project. And, true to my word, and this is why the comments and questions around my integrity are particularly troubling for me, but I've lived up to my integrity and kept my word. And so did, so did Councilmember Ritchie, by the way. We both volunteered to be on the subcommittee for WACOG on transportation, and we both pushed for and advocated for Marriott Sladeville's project. In fact, the project that my staff helped develop, thank you for your help with that. I just want to pull up real quickly an article from the Standard Examiner after the Weber County Commission approved said project. Headlining the priority list in terms of total funds requested was the planned widening of 1,200 West at Marriott Sladeville, and nearly $7.5 million, including a recommended $3.7 million in third-quarter sales tax funds. What that's saying is that Councilmember Ritchie and I lived up to our commitment, supported, advocated for, approved through WACOG, and the county commission approved $3.7 million in Phase 1 of the Marriott Sladeville project to take care of the mile of denial, to be followed by another phase to make up for the total $7.5 million. So if you don't like how the project's going, you don't like the timing, speak to your city, Marriott Sladeville City. They have a similar venue that is made available for you. I also didn't say don't talk to the mayor. I've talked to you so many times, Mr. Wayne. I just don't find that they're very constructive anymore, that's all. Moving on to the Aspen project. Do we have a plan? Absolutely, we have a plan. I can't, I don't have time to rehearse the entire plan. I'll tell you that Ogden City is doing more than any other city in this area, no doubt about it. I've never said that no other city is doing anything. The Family Promise Project in Harrisville is the exact part of the plan and why we need Weber Housing Authority as a partner in housing in this county. Acting Chair Hire, Vice Chair Hire, you sat on the Housing Subcommittee for WACOG for a long time, and it's been a dang struggle, hasn't it?
It has been hard.
Because we can't get support- Because we can't get support and help from other cities in the county to help resolve the housing problems.
Right.
And we can't do it by ourselves. Yet everybody continues to put the pressure on us as though we hold the cards to everything in this, in this entire county. We don't. And you advocated for other cities to help and participate in solutions, didn't you?
We even made a resolution.
Yes, we did. Absolutely. Appreciate your support in that. It's been, there's been ongoing challenges. Every city's got their needs and their priorities. But it's just case in point to the challenge that we've had here. But I'm thankful to Mayor Tate and the effort that she's making in her city. And it is exemplary to what can be done by all the other cities that would make us like other counties, including Davis County. You saw the whole blow-up in Caseville around a warming shelter. It's actually bringing people together, and they're actually seeing that they can solve problems and help, right? I talked to a, I talked to a gentleman today that lives in that area and said, yeah, I saw that they're moving forward. I'm glad that it's working out. Davis County is broadening the, the solutions across cities. Salt Lake County, also, they are taking the same approach that we are asking for and have long asked for. Ogden City never should have been in this position, ever. Never should have been in this, you as the city council never should have been in this position, nor me as the mayor. Because we should have had better alignment as community anchors and partners a long, long time ago. Unfortunately, we didn't, but this is the cost of it. In Salt Lake County, services are concentrated in Salt Lake City, I hear. Yet, still, Sandy City has stepped up and built a shelter, runs that shelter. Midvale City done the same. Salt Lake, South Salt Lake does the same. The old model of concentrating solutions around services is not the model that's working elsewhere. We're asking for a similar approach, that's it. And we shouldn't have been in this position, because we should have had alignment. But we also would have recognized the statute if the statute had existed in its normal format, but it was in a definition section of the statute. That's why it was overlooked. Fortunately, we didn't see it sooner. It put everybody in a terrible position. I'm glad that we were able to actually execute on a solution that the Weber Housing Authority Board Chair proposed to me. What we did tonight, granted, not the preferred solution, I get it, but it was a solution that the Chair of the Weber Housing Authority Board of Directors proposed to me. So when you speak about integrity, with integrity, I followed through with the commitment and the request that they made. I committed to do it expeditiously, so all the, all the moving quickly concerns, that's coming from the same people that were asking us to move expeditiously. What do you want? We were as transparent as possible to make sure that we moved expeditiously and followed through on the commitments. To Heath's questions about developers, no. We haven't had those discussions. Anybody that does ask, I would tell them, first of all, we've got to get through this process and this step. Second, we have due diligence we have to still go through before we ink the final deal. And finally, we're going to proceed with an RFP. If we go out to private development, it will be through an RFP. If we do it in-house, it won't. Those decisions haven't been made, because we have still to make these decisions today. I think it was Brooke Barrigan made the comment, just because we disagree with you, accuse me of scolding people. I'm not scolding anybody. Have I been scolded? Absolutely. Have I had some really tough conversations with, with a friend of mine? Absolutely. Did I apologize for my tone? Immediately, I did. Just because we disagree with you is actually how I feel. I think I said it with you guys at one point. We have a disagreement. That is what it is. It's not personal, but it has certainly become personal. Water. Laura, not going to leave you hanging on the water.
Pardon me?
I'm not going to leave you hanging on the water, even though you didn't...
No, I just, well, I, it wasn't negative. It wasn't negative.
Taylor, can you help me?
In fact, I wanted to, I wanted to...
I got, we got...
He's going to handle for you.
They've all been great.
Thank you.
Especially I talked 1-on-1 with Jared.
Sorry.
We're good, Laura. Time's past for that, so...
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if Taylor addressed some things? Thanks, Laura. Sorry to set you up like that.
He might take a minute of your time, okay?
Thank you. Go ahead.
That'll work.
I wrote down a couple sticky notes, so I will try and make it as quickly as possible. We issued last month some items coming forth as we were doing the Canyon Waterline Project. As the treatment plant was coming online, we were always working with sources of water, how they work. So there was some discoloration that was coming through as part of the source, and we're working on that. Unbeknownst to us at the time, last Thursday, there was some heavily discolored water that started to become problematic. We did some research, some evaluation. I appreciate our water utility crew. They went and found out, we found out what it was. We were having some exceptionally large draws on the north end of town. As they were opening, closing fire hydrants and doing some other items, it caused a lot of problems within the system. So as that water hammer, as that force and velocity was hitting our system, it started shaking stuff loose. And so as the water group was putting together our heat map, it was following all of our large transmission lines. So picture 24 inches of water main under 100 pounds of pressure getting immediately stopped. That's a lot of force that kind of jolts around in our system. We've since worked with the other entities that were working on some of this stuff. We've fixed that problem, and we went back through all of our appurtenances. We worked with them on their stuff. We wanted to make sure we weren't going to have those issues again. So we had sent out a letter that talked about discolored water and happened to get hit with another problem. So our initial reaction was, oh, yeah, that's the discolored water with the canyon. But upon further evaluation, it was a separate item. That, that item has since been resolved. We did have quite a few calls that came in Thursday and Friday of last week. We were back, we had two phone calls of questions of discoloration again today. A couple items that we've done just as this project's coming up, so we're lining the line coming through the canyon. We've started the Pineview Reservoir, we've made our way to the treatment plant, that's why we're having the treatment and water discussion we're having now. Actually, back in 2018 and 2019, we did the Wheeler Creek Project. And as soon as it warms up, we're going to be able to get more water that'll help take care of that same issue. So we've done that project, we've done the 24-inch water line, and we anticipate the beginning of May, we'll be able to turn our wells back into our diversion, be able to have those issues resolved and taken care of. But as, as again, as the temperature starts to warm up because of Wheeler Creek and because of some of the projects we've done in the past, I picture in the next two to three weeks, we won't be having these issues. In the meantime, our water utility staff is committed to looking at the different aesthetics of the water, trying to figure out what's going on. But I can tell you, everything we've done is the water is still safe. We don't have any issues as far as those sort of regulations are concerned. And so that's, that's the item that we take very seriously and wanted to make sure. So that was, I wanted to hopefully describe the two items separate and how they kind of got balled into one, but that is what happened. So, thank you.
Thanks, Taylor. Thanks, Taylor.
Can I finish just a couple things? Thank you, Taylor, for that. I cannot express my appreciation enough about the complexity of the project we've taken on. The Canyon Waterline is, I've often talked about it, is the biggest infrastructure project our city's ever done, and now redoing. The, the challenge around that project is off the charts. I cannot imagine not having Taylor Nielsen, Justin Anderson and their teams. The water crew up at the treatment plant, the Brady Heard and his team, they're unbelievable. And they're struggling through all of those complications, but they're, they're managing it for our people. It, when I saw some of the pictures that came through of the, of the water, I was like blown away. And, and it was a relief to know that it was two separate impacts happening at the same time, but they got conflated because of the timing and the, and other issues. So thank you for helping to communicate that. I hope that answers some of your questions, Laura, but also thank you for your...
I recognize both ends.
Sorry. Thank you for recognizing our staff. I, I'll save these for next week, because we've already taken a long time. But I've got a bunch of positive stories that, that we've received from people about the, the work that our staff are doing. And I'll just share one, because it's really salient around being asked if we have a plan for homelessness. And we do have a plan, and one of the things that we do, besides providing a metric ton of housing options, including 56 or 58 units in the Solace Project and working toward a Phase 2, at the exact same time that we were working on this project and we did that with the Ogden Housing Authority, we also have homeless service advocates. And we are the first in the state, potentially in the nation, to have a homeless medical advocate. That homeless medical advocate is named Angelina. She started recently, and we received a report from our Deputy Chief Mike Slater about how much impact she's making. And then we received this report. "I have observed and evaluated Angelica over time, Angelina over time. My credentials are, I was an EMT with my ACLS for three years until a baby died in my arms, and it was just too much. But this angel that you've put here, Angelina, is a godsend. I watched her save a baby's life and treat people with dignity and respect, even when their attitudes were horrible. Her evaluation of each and every patient is thorough and completely professional. She goes far and beyond what is expected of her. She has gained the trust of the residents here with her fantastic bedside manners. If we ever lost her, it would remove the hope and dreams of every, of each and every child, man, and woman here. These are the kinds of things that our people do every single day. Ogden City never should have been in the position that we were in on this project. But every single day where you are in a position to do the right thing, our staff are good-hearted, good human beings. They do good things for other people, every day. There is no exception in this room, every one of them. Amazing human beings. I have the blessing from above to work with them every single day. I'll always be thankful for that. And I'm particularly thankful for the work that our new staff member, Angelina, is doing at the shelter for us. This is what Ogden City does, every day. We continue to hold up the work that we do and continue to be denied any credit for that, which is fine. If I'm not getting credit, I don't need it. But Angelina deserves it, and so does every other employee that works here. Thank you very much."
Board members. Yes?
Vice Chair Hayer, can I make a few comments?
Hang on one second. Angela is mid-comment.
Oh, sorry, I can't hear you, Angela.
I don't know. There, oh, I just wiggled it. Okay, it worked. Okay, sorry about that, Marsha. Just really quickly, I just want to thank the mayor so much for following up on that road in Marriott Sliderville, because we went out and talked to them a couple of years ago about that. So I really appreciate that, and the efforts of, I guess it's Councilmember Richie, I can't forget what to call him now, that. And then also applaud the efforts of having that person at Lantern House. I think it's going to make a huge difference. You know, I'm on that board, and in the board meeting last week, I think it was last week, they were just talking about how it's been such a great addition. And they're still working on a few kinks, you know, in the process, but I think it's really going to be super impactful. So I appreciate that so much.
Any other board members? Okay, I'll look, oh.
So I, I just want to say thank you for the dialogue. I know that, that's really hard. And I, I want to follow up with something that, first of all, Robert Hunter said, and I agree, that Harrisville is, is really starting to pull their weight, and I really do appreciate that. When we were early on in our council, Family Promise came to us, we actually made the decision to house them in our fire station and at a, at basically a pretty low rent so that we could get them on their feet and, and obviously move on. So I do appreciate you bringing that up, Robert. I, I'm sorry, Ms. Barrigan, I don't have an email from you. I searched my emails, but I do have one from Heath. And I just want to read my email back to Heath so that you can understand, I did follow up those things. And I, I'm going to read it to you so that you all know where I'm coming from. And I've said it a few times, and I think it's the sentiment of many of us. I said, thanks for your email. I really appreciate all the feedback we are getting on this particular project. I agree with the success of permanent supportive housing and helping people out of homelessness. I am struggling with this project not in the context to its success, but the context of bringing an even greater concentration of lower AMI to the area that already has a concentration of halfway houses, other permanent supportive housing, and even housing that Ogden Housing Authority has in the neighborhood. To me, this model can be successful anywhere because of its centralized nature. Therefore, it could be successful in other areas of our city, of our city, I want to say that, or even other cities within our county, without overburdening the neighborhood that already has several other thousand options. Again, thanks for this information, because he provided a lot of information in his previous email. I look forward to hearing more about this project and Andy's comments tonight during our work session. So I just want to say that if anybody had reached out, I would have continued to ask that question, continued to tell them about where I was coming from. And so it, it's always an easy target to blame someone for the frustration, because I didn't vote one way that they wanted to vote. And I, I, I'm not going to apologize for that, but there are reasons why my email back to Heath back in January. So, that's all I wanted to say to you.
Thank you, Chair White.
Move, we adjourn.
We have a motion by Board Member Myers and seconded by Board Member Blair. To adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.